The right to look at health insurance whenever we want, Prime Health has the five year deal. If we decide we don't wanna do that, then that will be the vote and we don't do it. I think it's the smart thing to do. I also think, after talking to Matt, that everybody's five years is gonna be up now, right? Cause we all started together. So there's gonna be a lot of people talking about looking. And are they gonna re-talk the five years? I believe they will. Do you think they will, Paul? Maybe I'm wrong, but we all have a seat at the table, so that's gonna be a discussion, I think, by everyone. Everybody's gonna. You know, it's five years for everyone, cause we all started out at five years. For me personally, I never thought it was always gonna renew at five years, but that's what it sounds like they're doing right now. Was there a discussion about that five years at?
I believe the contract automatically renews.
Right, but but was there a discussion? I didn't get to the last meeting.
There was not a discussion at that meeting.
And I think there were, I'm just saying, what I think is, there will be a discussion.
Because I understand from that, the Prime Health side, when you're starting. You had to have five years, cause you needed so many dollars in that pool.
That's right.
Otherwise that wouldn't work. But now going forward, if we don't price shop now, then it'd be basically. The county has not price shopped for ten years then. And and that's where I have a problem with.
I see what you're saying.
And I don't know, I, chances are, we probably end up going back to Prime Health anyway. I don't know if the. If if those percent going up, you know, with like UCAT going up thirty percent, who knows in terms of what?
I just like that they're evening and on a level playing field and you know, everybody's gonna be about the same and that's the goal. And that was the goal when we started, so. Um, I'll guarantee you, if they go up twenty percent, somebody else is gonna be going up thirty, I mean, in my mind. And and when you say they'll take us back, maybe, but if we go in and we can't look until what, July or?
Yeah, August, August or September.
And then they look and say, well, look at here, you had a million dollar claim. No, we're not taking you back because you've got three, I mean, they don't have to, there's nowhere.
It's a good, it's a good calculated risk, knowing that two, you've been part of it for five years, there's two members on the board. This would be a good calculated risk to price check, is all I'm saying.
I'm not gonna discuss, I mean, I'm still.
I hear where you're coming.
We talked to him on the way up there, Paul's probably got some more information.
I look at this letter, it's got my name on it here, so of course.
Did you sign it already? I was gonna ask you, I was gonna ask you about that.
She had a J U on there.
I noticed right away, oh, I see, that's just where you're gonna say.
I am reading this and it says effective, you know, the date, will be, will be withdrawing.
Yeah, that's what it says.
And and I like the wording, uh, will be looking. You know, do do we have to completely withdraw?
Yes, the the language in the letter is what.
Before you wrote that letter?
I didn't, I did not write that letter. So that's the same, uh, letter that Renville is providing.
Yeah, see, Renville is leaving.
They are leaving.
But we don't know if we are, so.
Correct, but we still have contractual obligation under the contract.
So you got this letter.
Provide, we mean, we can provide them information as well, to let them know, our intent is to shop. Our intent is to continue to explore Prime Health as an option for us. However, per the contract, we need to provide this intent to leave, and that's what we're doing.
If we provide this, and eight months from now, we decide, nope. What we had with Prime Health is the better deal than what we can find on the open market, and we come back to Prime Health. Will they let us back in at the same package and rate that we're currently at? Or is that an opportunity for them to say, well, now it's gonna be this price tag?
Well, I think they're gonna look at what happened in that eight months, too. I mean, that's, you know, as far as claims and whatnot, I mean, I think that's. Which anybody else would be doing, too, that you go out to shop with, they're gonna look at where you're currently at.
But will they, does this letter then provide them with the opportunity to lower our package and up our price? In order to get back in?
So so to be clear, to be clear, they do not have to let us back in if we send this letter. They do not have to, but I hope they would, yes, but they do not have to.
Wants to shrink it.
I agree, but maybe they're also gonna say, we were big, I'm not even, I'm not gonna get into the same. I'm, you're not gonna move my vote, so I've already made up my mind. I think it's, I like to stay with them, I like what they're doing, they're they're accomplishing what we asked them to accomplish. So that's gonna be where I stand with it. I like our rates, I like them all coming together, we have a seat at the table. Those are things that I think are important.
Are we locked into five years? Let's say three years.
For now, we are.
Blue Cross comes knocking on our door.
For now, we're locked into five years unless it changes when they're at another meeting. I would guess if they get letters from people that are saying we're shopping around because we don't like the five years. Then maybe you're gonna be able to sit down and have them say, well, let's go to three. It depends on, it's like Danny said, they needed five years. They have to have so much money, and there was only one way to do that, and that was, once you got in. You had to make sure you stayed five years, which makes perfect sense. I'm sure any co-op that starts out does that.
Five year deal, but if if in three years we wanna get out, we have to pay a penalty.
As it stands, right?
A- as it stands today, the the Prime Health Board could ultimately make a change to the joint powers agreement. That would then ultimately have to be approved by the the signa- the signatory parties, um, to reduce that term. That is something that could potentially happen.
But the only way they would ever reduce that term or change anything is if people said, we're not. And our intent is to leave right now, otherwise they aren't gonna wanna change, because they have five more years.
But we have to remember, the board, the board is comprised of commissioners from counties. That is Prime Health, it's a coalition of counties, it's not a private company who's making business decisions on this. So, we are part of that, we are them and they are.
Did that discussion ever come up as a board, when you knew this five year thing was coming up? Did you guys say, uh, I think we have Atlanta.
There was a discussion regarding the notification period earlier this year. Um, whether or not that could be shortened, I believe, down to six months. Uh, the decision of the Prime Health Board was because of the. The amount of time that had to go into developing, um, rate estimates for each of us. And the fact that Prime Health does that earlier in the year than other private insurance companies in order to. Provide us with better information for our budgeting process and for union negotiations that gets done in July rather than in. Early fall like we would get when we go out to RFP. That there was a desire to not adjust that notification period, so that they still, they knew who was gonna be in the pool. Come that time period, when they're doing their rate setting.
That was another thing we asked them to do, cause it was always an issue during negotiations. You had no idea how high, you know, and you'd say, did you find out yet? No, I, I'm guessing, they said maybe. So that was another thing when the counties got together, that we knew what we were dealing with when you went into negotiations, and that was another important factor. I will say this, and then I'm gonna stop. But, um, I did talk to Matt a little bit at the meeting, and I said, is five years, yeah, was that? And and he didn't come right out and say, but I think he'd like to address this board, I think Chris Villa would like to address this board. I said, are you getting a lot of notices? And he said, no. And I think it's, I I'm not gonna tell you that this is gonna be five years or not, but I think. It's like Andrew said, it's commissioners sitting on the board, it, they are us. So, that's, and I am gonna stop, so.
Well, I got a few things, naturally.
I'll see if you answer my questions. See if you answer my question.
There's some important things. Number one, we have a seat at the table. We give notice, if we do, on December thirty first, we no longer, we have the seat, but we don't have a voice. We're done voting, we're done pushing for be- having any voice on Prime Health whatsoever. We need to remember that our two hundred and forty employees, when the blending is done, the original five year commitment. Was to get to a seven year, because they they said it would take seven years to get it to a blended pool. We won't be a pool of two hundred and forty, we'll be a pool of approximately five thousand, which is going to be a great advantage. Prime Health was created from input from the employees. Now, they developed their own Prime Health. Um, and one thing that was being very difficult was to find an affordable family plan. Prime Health created an affordable family plan. Um, if five years is too long, then we're at the table. Get the motion out there, let it get chewed up. I find it very hard to believe that we're the only county that doesn't like five years. Years is a long time, it is. Once you've been in the initial five. Then it should be shortened to two or three, and I brought that very point to Matt Magnuson, and I said, Matt. Five years, I understand, so we have eleven new counties coming into Prime West. If any of those wanna join Prime Health, their buy-in should be at five years. Okay, but then after the five years, that commitment needs to change to two or three. And he looked at me and he said, that's up to the board. So it is up to us as commissioner, well, Andrew and Beth as our representatives on the board to bring it forward. Um, the first year in the pool of Prime Health, the county saved two hundred thousand dollars right from the get-go. Um, if we file an intent to leave, they need to know what our intent is by July. As Andrew said, they begin setting rates. So if we intend not to come back. Or come back, they need to know, because it is going to affect rates in the entire pool. Um, and and there is a wellness benefit. I don't know how well that's known, or if it even is known. For those who wanna join a local gym, there is a benefit that they can get, uh, on so much per month towards that gym membership. Um, and this is is information I got from Jim and Matt, then I talked to Bill. That was interesting. Um, I I had a good conversation with him. First thing out of his mouth was, he said, there's nothing wrong with Prime Health employees have good coverage. Um, and then after our work session where he talked, he contacted Pete. And just to find out how they would look at us, they are not going to look at us as two separate pools, one for the sheriff. And one for the county employees. If we went to peep, we will be one pool. And his comment was, the rates for the sheriff's department will go up in all likelihood. Um, he also said, we might be better off staying right where we are, which I thought was interesting, because I sure didn't hear that when he sat here and talked to us. At all. Um, I talked to Paul Vernick, who was there in the beginning, who Matt said had a very good relationship. And Paul did say, it was a mess in the beginning. Um, but they managed to get it straightened out, and he indicated he had a good relationship with them. Now, and and I got cut off, so Paul and I didn't get to finish our discussion, so, um, that was kinda where we left it. But I want us to think about one other thing. Every year, we hear about the big medical company or big health insurance providers. Giving these monster executive bonuses. Prime Health doesn't do that, it goes back to the employee pool, goes back to the money that we have. No big bonuses, we don't give out twenty million, twenty-five million dollars to the C- CEO of Prime Health. So it stays where it is, and and I think that those bonuses are going, if we go to a bigger company and we see a big bonus in nothing. Man, that came right off our employees' backs, and and so, um, I personally. Would rather stay at the table, keep the ball in the game, and fight for some changes, while we have a voice at the table. Rather than jump out and, it's not like car insurance shopping or home insurance shopping. Where we should go out every, on a frequent basis, we rarely use our car insurance and our health insurance unless it's an accident. Health insurance is used frequently. And the last thing I'll say is, we need to look at the age and makeup of our pool as we look at it. Um, young people in a pool are less likely to use health insurance. The older the pool gets, the more those health insurances are used.
Do we have that statistical information? Do we have that demographic? Do we use that in bargaining?
Remember, they don't, they aren't looking at age, when they're looking at our pool, they're looking at claims.
Yep, the claims are.
It's impossible for us to say where those claims.
They are, well, they they are, that's such, but they always say, well, for us, but I think of being you own the insurance company. If you wanna know per member per month, you'd be able to find out.
Per member per month, yes, but being able to look at it statistically and say.
But they always say it's not to do with age, but I can remember when we were in the co-op and it would go up twenty percent. I'm like, well, why is it going up then? I mean, so.
I I I appreciate you letting me get through all of those things, I know it was two pages, but, um, you know, and talking to Jim and Matt and and Bill. Um, I wish I would've had a little bit more time to get a little more history on the local basis. And then Mikel, when I asked you at our work session, are you getting complaints for employees about our health coverage? Which is important. Um, you go into the doctor, are you covered or are you not, and was it a hassle and so forth? One other thing, you pick up the phone to call Prime Health, you actually get to talk to a person without going through, press one, press five, you know their extension. You get a person, first go around, so. You know, and as I said before, I have to look at this as a benefit to the employees. I personally do not take the health plan afforded to us as as commissioners, I have my own health plan. So, I I'm looking at this from a little bit different perspective, so. Here endeth my scene for the day.
I have a couple of questions. This this business about people can utilize. A local gym membership, is is that a big deal among our two hundred and forty people?
I don't know if it's been like like Paul stated, I don't know if it's been advertised all that well. We have probably a handful of people that do use it.
That's that's what I'm wondering, that's not a make or break thing.
And now they're introducing in twenty-two, we'll have what's called Well Beats, which is a virtual workout type of thing.
Because I could see where it would benefit our local businesses, if two hundred and forty people on this health plan had the option. Of the health plan kicking in twenty bucks a month toward a membership, that would be awesome.
I think every insurance company has a Medicare, you can do it with Medicare, Silver Sneaker or whatever I am, but ask me how often I do it since COVID. I was doing it pretty regular, but even though I'm a Silver Sneaker, I'm not doing it so much.
I had Blue Cross for she- for years with the college, and they did not have a a benefit like that where they would kick in. I was shocked.
Getting to be common practice.
But I wondered how many would actually.
Have you actually had a conversation with Matt since our last meeting?
Um, since our last, yeah, he and I had a brief conversation.
About, and this is what he said we have to give to go look, that we actually have to withdraw? That isn't, that isn't what I heard, I heard wrong then.
I think part of the wellness piece that they were referring to is, um, some of the counties have. Where they get like ten thousand dollars from their health insurance company to use towards wellness, so they can use it on. Initiatives like health fairs or Fitbit type programs. Um, giving back if somebody goes and gets a physical and lets us know that they went in, and they get like a certain reduction on their. Um, premium for one month or something, you know, things like that, or they do more wellness committees. Where they'll have, um, education about foods or, you know, nutrition, things like that.
Do we currently have that in the package we have with Prime?
He told me, we do not give outfit bits, we, you know. He said, why don't you think what it costs when when Blue Cross starts giving outfit bits? That money is coming from somewhere. And Paul is right, this was designed by employees, many, many meetings, what you need, what you don't want, what interests you. He, Matt reminded me of that last week when we were up there, that's how it was built and it was rocky and. He and Paul went around a lot, but the one thing he did say was Vernick knew insurance and he helped build this and and, uh, they. Established a good insurance.
But our current package does not include a membership to a local.
It's twenty dollar. You don't get a free fit bit or anything.
No, no, but the one that we have now. This, okay, I I haven't looked into that.
Because I went up there and said, well, we don't have that, and he said, oh, yes, we do, so then I felt stupid.
Advertise that a little bit, we we should advertise that, okay. Um, so if we withdraw, I have to use that word in this letter. And then we come back, do they lock us in? I I'm assuming not. Lock us in, because the way it sounds, every July, there's an annual, you have to, um.
July is when the insurance companies, most insurance companies set those premium rates for the next year.
Okay, and and so we're not locked in for five years, i- if we're gonna pay so much, it every year, it fluctuates. Even if we sign in with a five year contract, each year, there are bumps. So that that's not an advantage.
And then we go into union negotiations and talk about how much the county is gonna take of that increase versus.
So that that's annual, even if we're in for a five year contract, okay.
Semi-annual and then union, has been, I should say.
Madam Chair, if I may ask that question, if we, um, decide to rescind our withdrawal. Was there a proposed letter or statement that they gave you that says, this is the language you should use to opt back in? Or rescind your withdrawal?
The the joint powers agreement doesn't kind of contemplate that, it contemplates just withdrawal.
So we can't use a different word?
And I agree, I think that's the, I like to think, I don't live in a communist country on that kinda stuff. I don't like that, you know, we need to take a look at this or it's negotiable, it's either you're in or you're out.
Yeah, that's my whole. Without any guarantees or anything, I mean.
And I get, I completely understand the five year first, uh, like if somebody wanna join now, I say you're in for five years. I get that, you know, a new county wants to come in, I completely understand that, but once you're in the pool, you've helped establish a pool. The kind of known negotiation, it's another five years.
Let's not pick up our basketball and go home, let's stay in the game and fight it.
Well, and I'm I'm not, uh, I I I hear you, I understand that, um. But you also have to create incentive.
Hard incentive for the saying, we're gonna lose, might lose Meeker now, what are we gonna do in the next se- seven months to say, hey? We wanna keep Meeker in the pool, too. Otherwise, that won't happen, I just really don't see it happening, otherwise, this should, this discussion should have been happening beforehand. But maybe, you know, saying, because another five years is a long time without any guarantee, no businesses. Period would ever do that without any guarantees in terms of investing whatever, one point eight million dollars of premiums each year. That's nine million dollars without any guarantees, other than you're part of a pool. And I understand the pool process, it makes sense to me, but I also understand that. Insurance companies are flush with money now, and there might be some programs out there that have caps where they can allow to do that to gain more business. And no, I know Prime Health, no matter what, they're not gonna wanna lose business, cause no business would ever do that. Especially if we're not asking for anything more, we're just asking to price check.
So we can, we can say, no, we're not gonna send this letter, we're gonna stay in the pool, but then we're still gonna go out and check around. Which is, which is a good thing, we're still gonna shop, well, let's say then we find one, so then we come back and we say, well, you know what, we really found a better package. In order to get out of this, then we have to pay the penalty, right?
Which is fairly substantial.
They they have you, they have you.
Is it three, what, did Renville have to pay the hospital three fifty or, I don't know, I'm just guessing, I can't remember.
I can't remember the amount, but everybody doesn't pay the same, I don't believe.
Depends what year you're in that you.
Oh, I see.
Two, you're gonna pay the three year.
Oh, I see.
But being that we lock in five years, we're probably gonna pay the biggest penalty.
The big one, sure.
Madam Chair, for some history, I called attention to the five years as being a concern of mine when I reviewed the original agreement. I had conversations with County Administrator Vernick, and he said, you need those five years to get your your base. I don't recall there being an additional five years after that as the intent at that, at our original discussion. I'm not sure if that's plugged into the actual joint powers agreement, or if that was after the fact. So from what my memory serves me, it was flagged, it was a discussion at the county board at the time. And the five years was appropriate as a base, but beyond that, I don't recall.
Um, the specifically, the joint powers agreement states, each member's five year commitment should be automatically renewed unless the member provides notice of voluntary withdrawal from the pool. At the end of the current five year term.
I see, so all parties in the pool are on this five year. Okay, that's a good point.
I I don't mean to say anything, but I have a a prior obligation at twelve.
Well, I'm gonna say this and shut up, I would like us to have Matt here at the next meeting and then make our vote. Cause I think he can answer some questions that I can't answer, and we still have time, Matt Magnuson is the one that helped create this insurance. And Paul got a different feeling than I got a get, but when I said to him, it is five years dropped in, he said, well, you own the board. So we need to talk about it, and as I said before, you own the insurance, I mean. Everybody is up, five years is up, so let's have him here, and he can zoom in if he wants to, and we can ask him questions. Him and Jim, maybe even I'll drive down, it's good to meet him, um. We have Bill here, let's just have him here and ask him some questions, if that's fair. I don't think it's gonna move me, but it might move Julie, I.
But it only moved probably her towards your way, it won't mean ma- uh, there'll be no positive thing in terms of price checking. If you bring someone from the actual provider.
But what if he says, we're, we don't have to have five, five years is your stumbling block, you said.
And and any sort of price caps or anything in terms of that?
That's fine, I'm not making the motions.
Um, we have until.
Yeah, we don't have to do it today, I don't like, number one, I do not like the wording of the letter, I I don't. Because Renville actually was leaving, they didn't say we wanna shop around, they're leaving.
And and I talked to Commissioner Snow from Renville.
And I'm like.
You know, they're leaving, they're very satisfied with Prime Health. That's not why they're leaving, so.
I just don't know if we should be copying another county's letter who for, leaving for sure, at least I'd like to have that verbiage. I would like to find out from.
I can be, I would be happy to.
Can you, can you just call Matt and say, look, here's what we wanna do? We're gonna shop, or or I can, we're gonna shop around, and do you really want us to? Tell you we're never coming in again because we're shopping around, that doesn't make sense to me.
If, Madam Chair, if we're hung up on language, we could add a second paragraph that explains that Meeker County's intent is to go out and, you know.
This is a notification that we are shopping. We're not, we're not leaving, we're not staying, we're shopping, we'd like to still keep our foot in the pool. We don't wanna be. I I don't wanna be eliminated, and then if we say, yes, we're coming back for five years, then they stick us with. You know, oh, well, you said you were leaving, so now we're gonna uptick your.
But we have to remember, the way the the JPA is written is we have to provide twelve months notice of our intent to leave. We have to provide an intent to leave, it's not an intent to look around, it's intent to leave, that's the way the JPA.
We intend to leave if we find a better deal, not if we don't.
Well, and I I understand what you're saying, but that's, that's what the JPA clearly.
So if the requirement is to have the first paragraph, you leave the first paragraph, you add a second paragraph that says. Meeker County's intent is to, and you can explain it, and there's nothing wrong with at least explaining it, so it's very clear in the record why. We're wanting to go out, and that, we can even explain in that sentence, that, or that paragraph, the last sentence can be. If the county, um, is not satisfied with whatever they find, whatever we find, then we will. Rescind this agreement within the timeframe.
At the next meeting then, because.
It would have to come.
I am not sure that, I I'll be very curious to see how many people write the same letter at the end of December. Because five years is up for everyone, and I think that's gonna, you know, and now you said it isn't just the five years. It's the five point six percent increase or whatever.
Who, me?
Yeah, is that what you, is that the five?
My my whole thing is, no one would write a five year contract.
So it is the five years then.
Without any guarantees, period.
So if they said to us, it's not gonna be five years for you, cause you've already been in it five years, we wouldn't have this discussion, or we still would?
I don't know, it depends if you don't think we should pr- shop around or not.
I do think.
I don't know.
We're affecting two hundred. We're affecting two hundred and forty employ, two hundred and forty families, employees and families. We haven't heard from them.
Well, it's not easy to switch insurance, cuz when we built this insurance, it took many, many meetings. People were nervous, people were not. I get the five years, it's insurance, it's their life when they get sick. It's one of the biggest things in your life, so. They can use it. I wish we were growing the pool instead of trying to get out of it, that's just me.
And that's the question I have is if it's so great, why hasn't it grown to other counties then?
Bill had made the statement that there might be a fee for people to enter.
Sure there is, yeah.
Was probably the same one we paid eighty thousand in the initial.
Yeah, that's what he had said was eighty.
That's what we did, right?
That eighty was five years ago, it may be more now.
Same way if you join anything, join anything.
I see Mikel as the front. Orange, that is so cute.
Yeah.
I see Mikel as the frontline person.
I'll definitely use this on the farm and then I'm sure I'll look like, oh, what's this guy up to, huh?
Also, you can use to as a pointer on your.
Oh, I thought I said itch my nose.
For your um, surface, you can point to the screen.
Oh, thank you very much.
So I, so you have no interest in asking Matt any questions?
I think it's only gonna be biased towards Prime Health.
Of course it is.
Exactly, that's why you're asking for it. And I don't think they're gonna be.
What does that even mean?
Shall we just continue this discussion to the next meeting? I personally would like to end it today, but I don't think we're at that point.
I'm not gonna, I'm not ready to vote on that letter, but like it is, I'll tell you that.
Well, I think there's, I think there's several questions in the room that need to be answered a little more thoroughly before we vote.
One, one quick one. Mikel, you're the frontline person. When anybody has a question about their insurance, they call you. I want your opinion on our current insurance situation.
I think we're kind of between a rock and a hard place um, because of the language that's in the contract. Um, I haven't heard a lot of feedback from employees, whether, you know, positive or negative um, over the years. So this last year, I heard from one person that the way that their billing was handled on the, on the claim side was frustrating because they were looking at whether her claims were pharmacy or medical. And I guess there was some sort of process that was not smooth in how that was handled. But I will say that, um, so Leah is my point of contact at Preferred One. And she was very helpful and she tried to really bend over backwards for that employee. So that was the only real negative. I know before we had the um, non-HSA family plan. The way it's set up now, there was concerns with employees that had really high prescription costs. So that plan has more addressed that piece of things. Um, so I'm kind of torn to be honest, um, because I do, I do have concerns about if we go ten years without looking. Um, then on the other side, I also agree that, you know, I haven't heard a lot of complaints from employees. I think going forward, we might have to examine more about during negotiations, how much the county is contributing to help with the cost. But that's.
The the complaints will come in negotiations.
Right.
Then it'll be, the complaints are not with the employee towards the health insurance, it's between employee and player on health insurance.
But it doesn't matter, you can, I have to call about my Medicare advantage all the time. So that, it's funny, there isn't more issues.
Does this company work well with Litchfield's medical team?
As far as I know, I haven't heard anything that.
They haven't had any complaints there.
Do you have the insurance?
Yes.
How's it work for you?
I haven't hit any claims.
Then it's working good and for us. Anyway, I don't think.
It'll be coming.
So, so what I've, what I've heard is that we wanna take a look at the language in the letter. What I've done is I've forwarded the joint powers agreement to our county attorney to take a look at and see how we can craft that language to um, meet what we have talked about today. What other information can we provide that would help you make a decision?
Can we invite, do we care to invite this Matt and Bill to join us at our next meeting?
Danny doesn't want to, so.
I don't.
We don't care to do that?
But I can, I'll tell you what, Julie, I can give you his phone number if you would like to talk to him.
I just thought.
If he's gonna come talk, I'm.
If, if we wanted him to be here at the table.
No, that's okay.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna agree with Danny on that. I I don't think it would be fair to have, have it done that way. I think.
I'm just saying they're willing.
Individuals, we can make this decision by gathering the information ahead of time. Bill or Matt will talk to anybody on a one-on-one basis, pick up that phone and call them. I'm serious, they, you know.
Well, that was my idea, so.
They don't care what question.
Move on.
You ask them, they'll answer it.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion to table this till next meeting, so you can take a look at the letter. I'm gonna get a hold of Matt and see how it actually has to be written. I, it's not that I don't believe the county attorney, but she's right, it does not say that the new policy is another five years, does it, Brandy?
I'm reviewing it.
Yeah, so we'll have more information and I'll call him and ask him to.
Very good idea.
So a motion is to table all the second.
We have a motion that has been seconded to table this discussion for our, toward our next meeting. Uh, any additional discussion or questions?
The main thing on constructing that letter is if Prime Health will actually realize it or not, because we will have to make a decision the next meeting? Is that the way it works? So you'll have to figure out whether they'll realize this new constructed letter beforehand.
The conversation we'll have with them to.
Right.
So it'll be, you know, Brandy taking a look at the language in the JPA to figure that out and then I'll have a conversation with them as well.
They, I'm gonna tell you this, and Paul didn't get this impression, but I did, from Jim and Matt when I said, we really have to withdraw to go shop. And he goes, no. That's what he said, he said, no. So I'm wondering who, if we're misunderstanding, if they're just expecting us to go shop? But we have to have some insurance assurance from them then, we did not withdraw by the end of the year, so we're not gonna pay a penalty. That's really what we're worried about.
Prefer that method because it makes.
So I'm gonna just call him up and say, we wanna shop around, we wanna shop around here. We don't wanna be five years here, what are you gonna do about that? And we're gonna shop. Now, do you really want us to withdraw to shop and they're gonna say no? They're gonna say no.
If you can get that into the wording, then I am all fine.
Because every, I can't believe that everybody.
But then in the second breath, make sure you're asking, are you gonna penalize us if we leave?
Well, they are gonna penalize.
Are we gonna be locked in it right here?
No, that's the question, yeah, obvious, yeah.
When I asked Matt about the five years and suggested my suggestion of five coming in after the five, he said, he really just went, it's up to the board.
That's what he said, you own the board, you own the insurance. But we wanna know that now. And I don't know if we're gonna know that, but I am gonna find out, do you really want everybody to withdraw to shop? The answer to that should be no.
Should be no.
And if we don't get to a letter by the end of the, are you telling us then that you're gonna penalize us? Write me a letter saying you're not gonna do that and then then we'll shop.
It's fair.
I appreciate Brandy's counsel on.
Just seems more common sense to me than going through all this.
Cuz otherwise it feels like, like you said, you're either going in or else, or maybe you said it.
But but it made, it made a lot of sense when we started.
Well, yeah, you needed a pool of money.
Doesn't anymore. I mean, how are they financially, are they fine?
Have a decision.
They're fine financially, no, so.
They can set their rates for the next year, but three maybe.
That makes more sense to me.
That would be okay.
We will let you know by July if we're gonna stay or not, and we will know.
Is that doable?
July, we would not know.
We don't know.
Right.
It would be trouble.
Well, September.
Until September.
That's the problem we run into with negotiations all the time. We don't have any rates for anybody.
Now you do though.
We, we can guess.
But I thought they got us our rates by the time we start.
They did better this last round.
That was one of the goals we had.
When contract negotiations have been going for other places. You're on the negotiation team, right?
Yeah.
Do you wanna come?
I have the impression, Mikel, of if, if it ain't broke.
I don't wanna be rude, but I do have to.
I told them. Why look other places?
Yeah, I got, I will always remember that as Paul Johnson.
Deductible is high, so of course that's always, but if you have a lower deductible, then you're gonna keep it on your premium side. So it's.
We're at the table.
It's insurance.
You'll make that full call then.
At risk, um, you know, we haven't seen horrible increases over the last couple of years, so that's been nice, cuz we've seen some higher with P's.
Sure, okay.
And which is backwards, cuz usually people's.
That's all right, I don't mean to be rude.
See ya.
Do we have to, do we have to have?
See you later.
Why don't we vote now?
You tabled motion.
That you tabled it and Paul seconded.
I don't want your vote, but no.
Yeah, that's the motion. I think it was seconded that we tabled this or or extend until the next.
Information.
Uh, if there's no further, is it, um, the question has been called, so we need to have a vote. All those in favor of tabling this, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Good enough.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks.
Sale, I just wanna know if you're going to buy cows or what.
Keep going, yeah. So this will then be tabled, so I need to write that up. Tabled.
I'm responsible for this.
Dan, Andrew, you are, thank you, Mikel.
Thanks, Mikel.
Yep, so this is tabled.
Two very brief items that I will make as brief as possible. First is a reminder that we have our annual truth and taxation meeting next Tuesday at six PM right here in this room.
Is there a lot of appointments?
I I have not.
Have an appointment.
I have not heard from anyone.
Isn't that one?
No, that's the um, Board of Adjustments.
Board of Adjustment. This is where we go over the budget.
This is where we go through the budget and we will be.
You weren't there last year.
I might not be there this year either.
I wasn't there last year either.
Last year, I think they just had the budget pe, well, it was Zoom last year.
La- last year was a little different because of the situation with COVID, um, and so.
Normally, I would tell you from my experience, not very many people normally show up for that, which I wish they would. Cuz they'd have, then they'd know before they get their tax statement, right?
Well, they come in and complain about their valuation or property.
And that's the wrong, no, wrong meeting.
Which, which from what I've, I've learned is not a uniquely Meeker County thing that is a soda-wide phenomenon. And so, uh, we'll have the assessor's office open and available for folks to come in and talk about their valuation.
And make an appointment if they want to for the minutes, okay.
So then, um, the other item is that on December twenty-first, in addition to this discussion and the approval of our budget, um, we're coming up on uh, one year that I've been with you and so we're gonna uh, look to do an evaluation of my performance as well. Uh, what I'm going to be doing is I'm gonna be sending out a document uh, later today that provides a summary of where we are at with the goals that you had set for me as well as um, a little short questionnaire asking for uh, what you think I'm doing well, where I could improve and what you would like to see us focus on in the next year.
Good thing that's gonna be short, he said.
Yeah.
My, um.
I think we're gonna need more than pumpkin.
My hope is that you can provide uh, those responses to me um, by next Thursday, so I can compile them into a larger document and get that out to all of you.
You'll be sending that as an email.
Yep, I'll be sending that as an email uh, later today.
And then we'll do a closed session in January.
And then we'll discuss that, um, that, what your comments are for me uh, in closed session.
In January, probably.
I was thinking at the twenty-first.
Oh, you think we're gonna be ready on the twenty-first?
If we can get these documents together, but we can also take a look at the agenda and make a decision whether we wanna do.
I have one quick question then. Can we only have one subject? When we do a closed session, we'll have to put on there that it says review. Can you also put?
Reopen.
Can you also put on more than one subject or does it?
You would most likely reopen and then close with a specific subject matter so that we know the timeframe.
Say, this is just an example, not necessarily. Personnel matter, would you have to be specific or just Pacific or just say personnel matter?
It's specific. Personnel, you have to be specific.
Who it is.
Only, yes, the only one, yes, you do.
Really?
Um, unless it's, I think it's initial stages of an investigation potentially is where you wouldn't have to. Um, the one where you can be very vague is attorney-client privilege.
Okay.
We can't do a closed underwork session, right?
You'd have to notice it as a special meeting.
We can if we do it ahead, right?
How much prior notice? Is it a two-week, one-week?
It's seventy-two hours for a special meeting.
Just three days or something.
If there's an emergency or something.
Emergency is not, yeah.
Then you have to make a statement after like his closed session review about what it was like.
I think the other closed session we may have is the opioid settlement, next session, next meeting.
Which we can, I think we need to talk about whether or not we need to do that closely.
Okay.
Um, perhaps maybe we could consider after the next meeting, um, having a Christmas lunch and invite the newspaper or somebody to go along with us. So we're in compliance with the non-open meeting law.
Good idea.
It's a suggestion.
Let's all go to lunch.
That would be nice.
We'll still be here.
At lunchtime. That was my fault today, I know. I can't believe I did that.
Are you looking at me?
It was my fault today. It was my fault today.
Is that the end of your report?
That can, no, hold on.
Nope, not yet.
That concludes my report.
Okay.
And and we have committee?
Ma- Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to adjourn, suspending the committee reports.
I don't have much, unless somebody's got.
One committee to report, uh, two committees, and one is the joint, or. How does, is that appropriate or not?
You can make a motion to adjourn at any time you would like.
That's tru, that's right. We learned that, didn't we?
But it won't happen unless there's a second.
I second. But that's all, but now there could be a tie. It's afternoon, so. I don't have a lot to, I mean, I talked about most of my committee stuff already, so.
I don't.
I also believe adjournment, uh, you, you cannot have discussion on, you must just vote.
Oh.
So that's like a calling of the question. We have a motion to adjourn, it has been seconded. Um, we will take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Julie, you acted like you really didn't wanna go.
Oh, orange is my favorite color.
Aw, thank you.
This is so cute.
This is a non-agenda item, but.
Hold on then, hold on. We can stop the recording. You can say what you want.
Okay.